Point four, academic calendar modification.
Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? That's unanimous for the board members who are here. Fantastic. Any other modifications to the agenda?
No.
All right, well, we will then move to item 4.1, public comment. And our yield to my colleague.
Yes, we've got the first people signed up for public comments. The first one is Denise Geldman.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. And I wanted, Carl and I were just talking about all the service initiatives of the community and what a giant commitment to being on the board was. Thank you for that. I'm here to talk about retiring health insurance. Health insurance is one complicated subject, one to be forgiven for not fully understanding the types of insurance available to people 65 and older. For the sake of the public, the retirees following this meeting from home and for the members of the board, let me present the salient differences between traditional Medicare, that is governmental health insurance for seniors, and Medicare Advantage offered by private insurance companies. Until January 1, 2021, all eligible retirees 65 and older enjoyed coverage from traditional Medicare. On that date, these retirees were unilaterally moved off traditional Medicare to the privately-run Aetna Medicare Advantage Plan. What's the difference, you might ask? Isn't Medicare Medicare? Actually, there's a fundamental difference. Under original Medicare, the senior and the senior's doctor decide upon a treatment plan. This is what's called self-managed care because there's no third party coming between the doctor and the patient. Self-managed care is how the district's self-funded Blue Cross plan works. Traditional Medicare covers 80% of the doctrine hospital bill, and until 2017, the remaining 20% of the bill was paid by the district's Blue Cross plan, which continues to cover active employees and retirees under the age of 65. Medicare Advantage is a totally different type of insurance product. It's a managed care plan where the insurance company inserts itself into the doctor-patient relationship. A care plan may be decided upon by the doctor and the patient, but the private insurance company can delay or veto that plan by requiring prior authorization and outright denials of coverage. One can't forget that a commercial insurance company such as Aetna exists to make a profit. If Aetna gets X number of dollars from the government and the district to assume all the liability for a senior's health care, there's a strong incentive to keep outlays for care to a minimum. The New York Times reported on October 8th that the Medicare Advantage market is a highly lucrative one for insurers. Companies typically earn twice as much gross profit from their Medicare Advantage plans as they do from other types of insurance. Managed care features decisions made by an insurance company employee who never set eyes on the patient. Managed care is driven by the profit motive that seeks a good return on investment for stockholders. Managed care is an entirely different animal from the self-managed care available through original Medicare. Medicare retirees were promised contractually and by board resolution, health insurance coverage equal to or better than what retirees had during active employment. By definition, by providing a managed care product, which neither the active employees nor the pre-65 retirees are subject to, the board is failing in its legal and ethical obligation towards retirees.
Next, we have Armin Ba.
Good evening. I'd like to reference reports from the Office of Inspectors General for the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. But let me begin by noting that while insurance companies are quick to claim the problems detailed in those reports are specific to individual policies and not relevant to custom plans such as ours. The reality is that ICSD retirees on our custom plan have endured the very same problems raised in those reports, which include, one, excessive prior approval that led to delays in needed medical care. ICSD retiree complaints regarding prior approval are numerous, and resulting delays in medical care are problematic in significant ways. For the most glaring example, reported directly to you by an ICSD retiree waited in the hospital parking lot for approval that was not received until one hour prior to critical surgery. Two, the Center for Medicare Services cited 56% of audited contracts for making inappropriate denials. Denial for continuing physical therapies reported often by retirees. Early dismissal from nursing home care is detailed in a Kaiser Health report titled, Nursing Home Surprise. Advantage plans may shorten stays to less time than Medicare covers. In traditional Medicare, medical professionals decide when someone is discharged, but in Medicare Advantage, it's the insurance company that determines when a patient goes home. The most recent example for us is that of a school nurse who's appealed her denial of nursing home care coverage twice today. She spent her career ensuring student health, and now she's being denied needed health care at age 92 after only two weeks in a nursing home facility. And then I'd like to add the op-ed by David Newman, who notes that we did not anticipate the last six months of his wife's life would be consumed by constant battling with our medical insurer. Only after direct intervention by a member of Congress is the plan agreed to cover inpatient acute care hospice, to which she was clearly entitled for both Medicare and Medicare Advantage guidelines. That was his custom Medicare Advantage plan faced in the same obstacles that are all detailed in the Inspector General reports. And number three, Medicare Advantage organizations themselves, they overturn 75% of their own denials. But as one ICSD retiree remarked, I can't mount an appeal from my hospital bed. So finally, I would say critical issues surrounding excessive prior approval and denial of care on high spread and their factors in the investigation of fraud in Medicare Advantage programs, where seniors not only must be aggressive in their pursuit of coverage for care they're entitled to, but also because of the practice of designating some seniors as sicker than they actually are in order to get more money from the government. Aetna is listed among the Medicare Advantage programs. Now be investigated for fraud by the Justice Department for engaging in this very practice. Managed care plans are managed for profit, not for patients. So in closing, we had more options than our custom plan, but the same barriers to care are evident. The board that moved retirees from self-managed care to the current managed care plan couldn't have known at that time how problematic it would be. I get that. But now you're aware of all of the problems and all of the flaws. I'd like you to follow Maya Angela's admonition. Know better, do better. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Next, we have Carl Maddia.
Appreciating Board Clerk Tricia Beresford. She does such a good job of keeping the public up to date and informed. And anytime I contacted her with questions, she's always responded just very quickly. So I really appreciate that. And hopefully that won't count against my three minutes.
A minute and a half left.
Board has informed us that the district's lawyers believe providing an option for Medicare age retirees to return to original Medicare plus a supplement may run the risk of falling under the state's prohibition of a gift of public funds. It's understandable that board members feel they need to follow the advice of the district's lawyers, but there is certainly no prohibition against probing more into this legal advice, asking questions instead of just accepting it at face value. I'm certainly no lawyer, but it seems that reasonable questions should be posed. What is the purpose of the state's gift of public funds doctrine? And how likely is it that anyone with legal standing, someone who's actually been harmed by the activity, would take the district to court and incur legal expenses over this unusual application of the doctrine? How can providing Medicare age retirees the option to return to Blue Cross Blue Shield be a gift of public funds when the health coverage is precisely what all other district retirees are provided until they turn age 65? So are all of those other retirees receiving a gift of public funds? This is especially puzzling when the expense to the district should be less per retiree since Medicare would be the primary insurer with the district's plan being secondary. It's also the case that New York courts have held that the gift and loan prohibitions in the state constitution, quote, "do not prevent the use of public monies to remedy injustices in situations where some higher obligation of honor, fairness, or broad public responsibility exists." Clearly, allowing retirees to return to the coverage they're entitled is the fair and honorable course of action. New board members may be unaware that the state legislature prohibits school districts from unilaterally diminishing retiree health insurance coverage. The Medicare age district retirees we are speaking for maintain that the ICSD violated this prohibition when they forcefully moved us to the current Medicare Advantage plan. Employment agreements prior to 2017 make no reference to any separate plan for Medicare age retirees. To change from a self-managed insurance plan, Blue Cross Blue Shield, with original Medicare as the primary payer, to a managed care insurance plan, Blue Cross or Aetna Medicare Advantage, is a clear violation of the same terms and conditions specified in various collective bargaining agreements. Why is the district worried about a rather unlikely legal action based on the gift of public funds doctrine when the much more likely litigation is from retirees who have been demonstrably harmed by the managed care practices of the current Medicare Advantage plan? Before you just accept the district's lawyers' opinions, we suggest you ask them these questions. Thank you.
Virtually, we have Dr. Sam Ferschur.
Unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. It worked. Yay. I am one of the people who listened to and agreed to the district's request in 2017 when they asked us to switch to the Hartford Medicare Supplement to save the district money. This money, it was suggested, could be better used for educational endeavors. It seemed like the right, even noble thing to do at the time and probably a small sacrifice with not much risk, as the school's administration and insurance consultant assured us that the plan would be equal to or better than what we'd experienced under Medicare plus Blue Cross Blue Shield. If it wasn't, they said, the district would make it right. The same was promised when we were switched to Aetna Medicare Advantage. Since the move to this Advantage Plan, however, many of us have experienced excessive preauthorizations, long delays, frequent and unfair denials, a confusing appeal process, and a reduced panel of doctors and hospitals from which to choose. Unfortunately, E&amp;B, the district's insurance consultant tasked with making it right for us, has more times than not sided with Aetna and has not been the safety net that was promised. I do believe that you, the Board of Education, acted in good faith when choosing to switch us to the Hartford Supplement and subsequently to Aetna Medicare Advantage, but surely you can now see that it hasn't performed as you had hoped. I've spent many hours on my husband's issues with the plans and many more on the Weir Committee trying to advocate for the retirees. If I had one wish, just one wish, it would be that the district's administration would put as much energy into looking into a solution for the retirees as they have into blocking our efforts and wishing us away. Finally, if this trend continues, Medicare Advantage plans will soon represent more than 50% of the Medicare market. As a physician, I dread what will happen if Medicare is privatized completely and the insurance companies operate unchecked. You, the Board of Education, have the opportunity right now to just say no to Advantage Plans by canceling the district's contract with Aetna and allowing us to return to traditional Medicare. I invite the board to think outside the box and work on a real solution. I invite the board to do the right thing for the people who have served you, a message that will surely get back to your active employees. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present.
These are all the folks who have signed up for public comment. Are there board responses?
My response at this time is that we have space later in the agenda for a discussion of this very issue. And I'm sorry I wasn't quick enough earlier to suggest that we move that forward. Is that a possibility now while we have people here, or is that inadvisable for some reason?
That's an excellent question. It would without question be out of Robert's Rules of Order, though I don't like Robert's Rules of Order. But I think I would recommend, since it would be relatively quick on the agenda, that we keep our agenda as is. But that's one board member.
We've got the consent agenda, which is very quick and student reports. Oh, we have student reports.
And the consent agenda.
And the consent agenda and the November meeting scheduled to discuss.
What if we flipped the discussion of insurance with the November meeting schedule?
Student reports and the consent agenda.
And the consent agenda.
Which would be relatively quick.
Yeah, we quick. So I would move that we switch the, the board switch the order of 11.1 for the November meeting schedule and 11.2 retiree health insurance. So that retiree health insurance becomes 11.1. And the November meeting schedule become 11.2.
But we also have superintendent report announcements.
Also, we moved to Calfor that night.
Well, that
You can cancel that.
You can cancel that.
Or you're usually very brief.
I'm concise. I'm sorry. I'll be quick.
Okay.
All right, so that has moved.
Second.
Any discussion? My quick conversation is Jill, will this get more to what you were asking for?
Yeah, that's, I'm comfortable with that. I just, it was also partly just a mention to folks in the room and anybody watching that we will be discussing that, although we
Absolutely.
Some of us are choosing not to respond to you individually at this point in time.
I just have two little questions.
I apologize.
Is a Morocco trip on?
It is.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
All in favor of the modification of the agenda at this time? It is unanimous. We will continue the agenda till we get to there. Our student reps, unless there's any other board responses, I apologize. Our student reps. Good to see you.
Well, I guess, I mean, LACS reps go first because they haven't been here in a while.
Sorry, I apologize. Nice to see you.
It's great to be back. There is like more LACS reps. They weren't able to attend tonight. So it's just me. Our school has been under constant renovations right now, which is definitely pros and cons. We're definitely very happy about, you know, all of the renovations happening to our school. It's been long needed and it's definitely appreciated. Our upstairs is like getting a full renovation, which we are all, you know, dealing with slowly. It's all worth it. Our transportation is finally moving forward, which thank you to the people that are part of that. We finally are having LACS students that need to take the bus showing up at nine o'clock instead of like nine ten, which is awesome, to put it simply. We had our fall retreat, which is a massive part of LACS. This year, we're able to go to Arnap Forest, which has been like a historical LACS place. We used to go there like
Many, many years.
Many years ago, since like a kind of a foundational part of our school. We haven't been able to go back there in a while, so we were able to do that again, which was just lovely, in my opinion.
And they have good weather. Good weather.
Oh, that too. It was great weather. There's a very strong possibility it was going to rain and it didn't rain. So everyone was happy about that because it's outdoors and you're embracing fall, which has been beautiful. Me, tomorrow, we have an all-school meeting regarding the civics ASM, talking about the midterm elections and what it means for, you know, minors in New York State and especially in our district. I'm very excited for that tomorrow, even though I do have the PSATs, which that's going to be fun. But it's before, so I'm all clear. So yeah, that's kind of enough to talk about LACS.
Great, great. Thank you, sir.
I'd first like to mention that Claire is unable to make today's meeting due to a tennis match, so we wish her and her team good luck. Students have enjoyed the past three, four-day weeks into the first quarter and are looking forward to another three-day weekend. Five-week reports are being sent out this Friday. Last Friday was our homecoming game, which we unfortunately lost, but students had fun as spectators and band students especially had fun playing at bands. The cross-country team ran at the Manhattan Invitational last week and boys varsity soccer won their soccer night, their senior night game. As Zara mentioned, juniors are taking the PSAT tomorrow. We are continuing to meet with Mr. Trumbull, and today we discussed pertinent issues of the return of the old desks, which we found out were because we need more space in classrooms, removal of the water coolers, and locked doors. Students are transitioning well into universal lunch with the addition of separate lunchlines and more tables outside.
The Tattler had its writers' meeting for November today, and the October issue will come out later this week, so make sure to pick up a copy. Many other clubs have also started and are getting into the swing of things and are looking forward to the club fair at the Open House on October 20th. And students and parents are also looking forward to the Open House, which Link Crewe will facilitate this year.
Skylights were added to some of the classrooms. It was an exciting, it was an exciting surprise to come out of the roof construction. Recently, we have gotten days off for Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, and Yom Kippur, the Day of Advent. This was helpful for many people in the Jewish community. It allowed many to not need to take a sick day or personal day to observe the holidays and gave others the opportunity and time to co-con celebrate more than the previous calendar allowed.
I also wanted an update on bathrooms, which we collaborated with Mr. Bremen on last year. I know that there were some renovations done to the faucets and stalls, which is greatly appreciated, but students are still struggling to use the bathrooms where they can't wash their hands or do their business in a clean and intact environment. I understand that bathrooms will be redone next summer, but it would be great if bathrooms are usable for students this year, too.
Yeah, and Grace and the other representatives brought up this topic last year, but we wanted to update, and it is still a problem. Students often struggle with returning into the building following lunch and other events outside or just passing between classes due to all the locked doors. Even some of the doors within the quad are locked during the school day. And following school, all the doors lock at 3:45, just five minutes after school ends. So any students collecting instruments after school or trying to pass between buildings for clubs or other after-school events often find themselves locked outside. They have to wait for a passing administrator or a student to let them in. Nearly all the doors leading outside have the capabilities to allow teachers to swipe themselves in with a card. It would be greatly beneficial if students had this ability as well through IDs or some other means. A great example would be student RF IDs.
We were hoping for clarification on if mental health days are excused as six days. Mental health, as you guys have made sure we know, is very important. We appreciate that. And the ICSD website currently doesn't show mental health specifically as an option for excused absences. This has led to students and parents and caregivers being confused over if their kid is allowed to be out if it is a medical sickness and clarification about that. Much appreciated. There is some general consensus that mental health is covered by sick days, but like as Mira mentioned, there's no like exact written statement. So we want a clear mention of like mental health day under examples of excused absences on the ICSD website. Currently, there's only an example of mental health appointment, which is different at least to many students and caregivers' understanding than taking a day off of school to take care of yourself.
Great. I have some responses to some of the questions that were asked, but I'll wait for my board colleagues in this. They would prefer something different.
I'll, I mean, I just have one question, I think is, but it's more for Dr. Brown about the IDs. I mean, is that something that's even possible for the students to get an ID? Would that like, would it have separate timing? Like, has that ever been considered?
Yeah, we talked about it. We've explored something. Brian, Dr. Brian, well, we currently with that capability, technical capability that would allow for young people to use their IDs. Because it's complex, as always, some of these kind of things.
Honestly, I'd have to get back. We have to get back.
Yeah, we've explored it. We can bring more information back at the next meeting. It is a technical fit in addition to some other fixes. So it's not as easy as just turning everyone's ID on. And we have points of fact who will be visiting. It was preemptive.
I'd be happy to come back and update the group at the next meeting about the ID question. As long, as well with the bathrooms.
And I note there also is the security component to that that is huge. And when we had our last building security survey, that was, the majority of it is locked doors and accessibility, doors being propped open, it's people letting people in, and it has to be hard to bag.
Yeah, I mean, there's a technical and an adaptive issue here. Just one, a lost badge where it not reported immediately, that creates a significant security concern. And with close to 1,200 of those badges circulating on a daily basis, that would mean a lot of doors could be opened by folks wanting to socialize. So that's one question that we would have to sort through. That's an adaptive issue. There's also a technical one about when we turn them on, when we turn them off, who has access to what stores, will a student have access to every door in the building? Or just something like, there is a lot here that we would have to bring back to go on.
And it also reminds me that later on this week and consistently throughout the year that Dr. Bryman helps lead a district safety committee that addresses the safety issues aspect of it, right? So that's slightly different than the technical issues, but I'm certain that there will be other folks who have questions about the safety, not just from students, but also faculty and staff and teachers.
We actually had a meeting this Thursday, and I'd be happy to invite some of the board reps this Thursday if you want to join us to talk about some of these safety issues.
I'm just, I'm glad Dan got the hint. That's that. Thank you, Dr. Brian. So that's one issue. Two related issues, and I'll ask my board members for additional comment. Talking about bathrooms, it'd also be wise for us probably to invite Heather Williams to a board meeting recently to talk about the facilities and both throughout the district as well as the high schools specifically and LACS and the work that's going on there. There will be a meeting at LACS. There was, I believe, or will be, talking about some of the facilities work that's been happening this Thursday as well.
We are doing tours of all the
But so to that point about, it's been a topic of conversation. And similarly, Heather Williams gave the facilities committee a very in-depth conversation about the tennis courts specifically and what has happened to tennis courts. Immediately upon the damage that was done to the fencing, the district coordinates with Whitmore Fence, if I'm pleased, the company, they went through and did an evaluation and decided that the damage was far more extensive because it also includes electrical conduit to run the lighting that's through there. And so in having a conversation with our then athletic director, it was decided either we could lose our tennis courts, all six of them for the season, or we could lose two for the season and cordon off the two that were damaged. And the athletic director, the tennis coach, and everyone involved thought it was best to at least have four tennis courts. As soon as the season is over, there will be a full renovation of those courts, including trying to rethink some of the electrical conduit and may find ourselves in this situation again. But that's the reason we can have a much better definition or a reason from Heather. Did I capture that, Jill?
Perfect.
Fantastic. So.
That is good, great to hear.
So, and then in terms of.
Something jogged your memory or you felt?
No, I knew, but I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna take over the chair of the facilities committee, Jill, trip.
Well, now that you're saying it, I remember it, of course.
Um, and then the question about mental health days is one I know that's happening across the state, both in public, uh, K-12 and secondary education. I think that is also an issue that we can come back to have a conversation with and will ask our team to see what that looks like. Um, again, it's whether one agrees with it or not, there are further complications, but things for us to explore and have the open dialogue, so let's proceed that way. I can put that on your team's list as well, Dr. Brown.
Yeah.
So, so it works. Any other, um, comments from, or responses from board members?
Oh, I wanted to say that the, um, varsity cross-country, um, team did an excellent job at the Manhattan Invitational. I was present and I saw those and I cheered those boys on. So they came like within the top four or fifteen within the group out of thousands of teams across New York State. So we need to definitely commend them. And it was good to see pictures of LACS, um, your retreat at Arnott Forest because everyone seemed like they were engaging, so excited to return to having the retreat there, so.
Other board members? Fantastic. And yes, I agree. I'm sorry, I was so excited to hear about Arnott Forest, and I don't mean to embarrass anybody, but I'm glad that I had a mentor like Carl to help me navigate the non-heated cabins versus the heated cabins, but we'll talk about it at some other point, huh? So, thank you all very much. Um, up next, we have, uh, the consent agenda.
I'll move into the second agenda.
Second. Moved by Moore, seconded by Chris. Um, we have a little bit of information, but didn't know first if there's any questions or if folks wanted to hear the information first. There are two items that we're prepared to discuss. One would be the boiler that's on the agenda, and the second would be the audit that's on the agenda as well. Amanda, can I ask you to come and then we'll see if the board members have a conversation?
So the boiler, I can just speak to that very briefly, right? It was discovered, obviously, as you're doing capital projects and you're, um, learning information every day, right? Of systems that you uncover that while you're in a building, um, or before you get into a building, something reaches its end of useful life. Um, and I think Grace, that's what you refer to with the bathroom sometimes, right? It's like, it's at its end of useful life, right? And it's like an amazing statement. And so the boiler, we reached that. And we wanted, we didn't want to tax, um, well, the system that we had. We didn't think we could get through another, um, winter. And so, um, this bid, we went through the big process, uh, to be able to replace the boiler there at Bell Sherman, um, which has chronic issues, so much so that we are ready to say goodbye to it. Um, so we actually are under budget with this bid, which is really fantastic, and that work can happen sooner rather than later, which is, which is why that is on the consideration of accounts. Um, but it will be part of the capital project, uh, for Phase Two, which is ongoing right now. Um, as Zara mentioned, at, um, LACS, it's one of the buildings we're doing. Bell Sherman will be next summer.
So Amanda, my apologies. I know normally we would have a bid that would go through the facilities committee or the finance committee to try to make sure we did not have an opportunity to do that with this one. But can we just explain the bidding process so folks understand how we do this?
Absolutely.
Not in short order.
Yeah, public bidding is not glamorous and it's for all government entities, right? So, um, anytime that you have, um, equipment specifically that's above a certain threshold of, uh, amount of money, and we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars for this, um, you have to actually allow for this to be advertised, for people to be able to bid on that work, right? And submit proposals essentially of installation, cost of equipment, timeline. And then those are, um, timestamp. They actually come in by a certain date and time. They all get a timestamp. They are unopened. They are taken to a public, um, again, announced, um, open, uh, meeting where those are opened, they are read, they are checked for, um, like the thoroughness of the bid itself. All the paperwork that corresponds with it has to be there. Um, and then, um, the bid amount is read out loud. Um, you talk about any maybe addendums that are there, and then those are catalogued on a sheet. And then the lowest bidder, the lowest qualified bidder, um, is publicly the one that you would then, um, meet with them the next day, and as long as they, yes, in fact, got everything correct and, um, they are, that is truly what the work requires, that is the bid that would then be proposed to you, the Board of Education, to, um, approve.
And that was the process for this boiler?
That is, that is correct. That, uh, bid opening happened last week. And again, due to winter coming, right, um, we expedite this. Uh, when we get them, we try to get them on a board meeting.
And a contractor that we have worked, that the district has worked with before.
It so happened that the lowest bidder is a contractor that we have done work with. It's actually kind of rare now that we're not finding a contractor that we're doing work with because of the, the scope of the work that we're doing with the capital project.
So I'm gonna ask Amanda also to speak to the audit real quick, but any questions about the bid for the boiler? And Amanda, on our consent agenda is, um, our audit review and adoption from our independent auditor. Can you speak to this as well?
I sure can. So this is our fiscal audit, right? So our financial report of the, um, accounting of our funds for the last fiscal year. So for a year that ended in 2022, June 30th, 2022, right? So we have like Grace, who was part of the budget development, she actually, all that budget work that we sat through, and we compared to last year. This is the report on those financials. So a budget is an estimation. The audit is the actual expenditures and revenue that the district has in all of its funds, right? So the public votes on the general fund, that is reported in the audit. But there's also an audit of the special aid fund, which is all of our title grants, our RPSR funds, um, our gear funds, uh, any grants that we might have had. Food service funds is audited, uh, capital project funds are audited. And then also there are statements about, um, any liabilities that the district has and any assets that districts has. So there's calculations about what our value is, right, in terms of property. There's calculations here about what our liability is if something catastrophic were to happen and we had to pay out benefits, right, to current actives and retirees in whole. This report gives everything. So there are actuaries that contribute to this report. Our treasurer, Emily Shipe, here at the district stewards this. She is the one that does all of the due-to-do's, from's, debits, credits, all the journal entries, all of the cash flows. She works closely with the auditors. We make corrections. Those are all tracked. There are notes in this. There are footnotes in this. There is, um, wonderful for some bedtime reading and other really exciting information, depending on your perspective about these things. But this is transparency. This is a taxpayer, community member, or stakeholder being able to look at this report and know how the dollars were spent and how the dollars came in to help with those expenditures. It is a clean audit report. There are no findings in this audit report. Um, and, uh, you know, we, we are very excited about actually doing a deeper dive into some of the reports that are shared in this audit, um, to kick off budget season. And so that's usually what we do. We usually take a couple of things from the audit report, project that during our first budget meeting, and we talk about where we come from to drive where we're going.
Okay, that's, and I do want to note, folks can, um, watch the hour and change audit committee for gripping, uh, entertainment.
Oh, yeah.
Um, though the draft we have here still contains the error. We were given a clean audit report. There was supposed to be a correction. That we are in complete compliance and in good financial state.
That is correct. So these are still drafts. So essentially what you're authorizing is for us, upon that final document, which none of the financials have changed, um, for us to be able to meet the state deadline of October 15th, which is when school districts must file, um, with the Department, Department of Taxation and Finance and, uh, uh, Office of the State Controller, as well as State Ed. We have different filing requirements that we have to do by October 15th to submit these.
Additional questions for folks about anything on the consent agenda? About the audits or? Fantastic. Uh, all in favor of the consent agenda? That is unanimous. Very, very, thank you very much, Amanda.
First.
Um, we are, um, if I understood correctly, up next is the superintendent's report, and you are going to, um, say thank you but no thank you. Is that correct, Dr. Brown?
I can be very brief.
Then be very.
Yeah, thank you for this time on the agenda, Professor. Uh, as already noted, I wish to also share my thank you, uh, to the Board of Education members for your service. Um, I know several of you are gonna be at the annual convention in a few weeks where our work will be highlighted. Thank you for spending awful day away from your family doing that. As I look around the room, many of you spend dozens of hours per week doing board office work for free. Uh, all we can do as an organization is to give you a free chicken dinner and a certificate, all right? So I want to note that also and also hand you all the tickets. Because next week is Board of Education Recognition Week across New York State. So now's the time, if ever, to say thank you to folks who spend a lot of time doing this work and rarely having sat in this seat for 12 years, do anyone ever say thank you. So thank you for volunteering dozens of hours per week, and again, I hope you enjoyed the chicken dinner. And.
It was actually Thai food today.
Thai food, chicken.
Well, it was chicken.
And the only other thing I can give you, which is a certificate and recognition of your service. That's all I have. Thank you all.
I'm just excited that Dr. Brown actually signed, so. Um, we have changed the agenda for section, um, 11, and we are going to move directly to the new 11.1, which is retiree health insurance. And I know, uh, I believe that, uh, Bob is gonna be joining us.
Sure. Amanda Purvis is gonna be joining us.
Oh, sure. That's right. Amanda as well, please.
So I will, I will get started. For those of you, I should have introduced myself the first time. Um, I'm Amanda Verba. I'm the Chief Operations Officer with Ithaca City School District. I had the privilege to work with wonderful retirees, um, during change, and that was really difficult. And I can count the hours, and it was wonderful to have committee members in meetings and feedback during the time that I was stewarding, um, the Ithaca, the Ithaca City School District away from the cooperative. And so for this evening, this morning, I was asked to pull together just a timeline of facts, right? So, um, we lived it, we walked it, um, and so I hope that I captured just some of the history. Um, Bob then took on, uh, the stewardship of the employee benefits, um, at, when we took over the capital project, um, which was $120 million. And so I sort of focused on that, maintaining the budget and the dignity act, and then Bob was able to take on, um, the work with the employee benefits. So my portion is just a very brief, just sort of, um, kind of timeline to my part, um, of, of sort of, um, my work with, with the retirees. Um, and again, this was just retiree. Remember that health insurance also, um, has actives and then retirees that are not Medicare eligible, right? So those that retired, that are under the age of 65, or, um, that don't qualify for disability. Um, those are the two ways that you would have Medicare, um, as, as, uh, your coverage. And so I just, you know, 1987, um, I was not with the district at the time. Um, I just use really good moisturizer, right? So, um, they, we actually entered, we went away from self-insurance, which is what we had, and then we went into the Health Insurance Cooperative that Tompkins Seneca Tyos, Tyoga Bosse's, um, host, right? It's not a Bosse's program. They actually sit at the table along with George Junior and along with Dryden and Ithaca, right? And Lansing and Groton. And so 1987, at that time, probably an analysis was done, and this was the right thing to do, and they pulled groups together. And I know from 1987 until 2016, I saw myself with grants that I was writing and programs that I was managing at Cooperative Extension in Bosse's, um, upwards of, you know, 11%, 12%, 13% increases. We felt it as staff people when we were working those years when our health insurance premiums would go up, um, quite high. But the consortium was just service trying to buffer because what it does is it socializes everybody's costs together into one, um, and, uh, it includes retirees and actives. And so those costs then are divided amongst the group and, and all of the districts. Um, Ithaca, around 2016, we were in negotiations at the time with a number of bargaining units. And we, um, started to ask some questions about like, is this the best opportunity for us? We were quite large, right, in terms of the co-op. We were a 43% of the cooperative. We had quite a lot of quote buying power, um, when it comes to insurance. And we started to, um, think about ways to analyze what we were, um, what our commitment was to our employees through negotiations and also what our costs were. And how could we not change the curve? Because you can never change the curve of health insurance. It will always go up, but try to slow that slope down a bit, right? To try to be able to move forward with insurance at, um, a cost that was a little bit less for, um, our taxpayers and our employees and retirees. One thing to be said about our, the way that we, um, through our bargain units for actives and retirees, we manage health insurance, is that the district has a share and the employee or retiree has a share, unless they retired, um, at a time when they had a bargain agreement where they didn't have to pay, um, a portion of the health insurance in, upon retirement or in retirement or at Medicare eligibility. And so, um, just so you know that this is a partnership. We always recognize that, that this is the district share, which is ultimately taxpayers, right? And the employees themselves were all paying for this moving forward. So we did some work here. We worked with a consultant to analyze our health insurance when we were in the cooperative. What would it look like if we moved everybody's staff and employees and retirees out? And what would it look like if we tried to negotiate with the cooperative and be able to, um, maintain most of our membership in the cooperative, but look at the retirees themselves that were Medicare eligible and look for options for that group, right? So actually divide the Ithaca City School District into two groups. When we proposed that to the cooperative, because actually that latter of the two groups, that was the best way to decrease the slope increase of the cost, um, um, each year. They denied that request. They would not allow us to be able to look at Ithaca City School District in two different populations. And they said, no, you are all one population. You can stay with us for everybody, or you, everybody has to leave. And so we, um, created, during this time, there was a large group. It was NICE representatives, uh, retiree representatives, it was, um, members of all of our collective bargain units. Uh, it was executive team members, board members. We actually were a sort of a health insurance advisory committee. We looked at a lot of the data. We looked at the data from the cooperative because we would give them everything. They would have time to respond, and then we would go back and forth. So this was happening all throughout sort of this, uh, from June 16th through 2017, June 2017. There was a deadline, um, in the spring that we had to let the cooperative know if we were going to stay or not. And so that was done after the analysis, and we did in fact say that we were withdrawing from the cooperative. So June 30th, 2017 is the last day fiscal year and the last day that we were with the cooperative. On July 1st, 2017, was when we became self-insured. Self-insure just means that, um, we, the Ithaca City School District, right, create the pot of money that we would then have third-party administrators that we would pay to be able to offer health insurance. So it could be Blue Cross Blue Shield, Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield. It could be the Hartford program. It could be Etna. Third-party administrators are insurance companies, right? We also had a consultant at the time, right, and we still do because, um, I, as we said, health insurance is absolutely confusing. It is a, it is a huge industry. And to Denise's point, right, it, I was definitely doing this as part of the job. The board was doing it as volunteers. We had people that were coming and we were learning so fast, but we needed someone who understood, um, really what, uh, what all of the health insurance world meant to us. And so, so we hired a consultant when we went, um, uh, self-insured. During this time, we also had, um, some analysis, like I said, about the Medicare eligible retirees. We offered in total, I think there were 11 town halls. I think many of you were at most of them with us. It was, uh, we had the school attorney, myself, we had, um, the representatives from the Hartford, representatives from E&amp;V. Um, we, uh, created a website. We tried to give information out. And at that time, it was really about going to already describe the supplemental plan, right? So we, when Medicare becomes your primary insurance at 65, you can supplement Medicare to cover all of the remaining costs if Medicare doesn't cover that. And that's what we had at that time. We also had, um, a Medicare D prescription plan, right, to cover prescriptions because we wanted to make sure that that covered everything. So, uh, again, we all, we did that work. We sat through the meetings. There was a time when we had to give a deadline to our retirees. At first, we were gonna move. At first, we were going to move everybody, then the board. We actually had a lot of meetings where we discussed about having an opt-out. And that, that is, yes, it was a long form and you, you know, you had to initial everything to ensure that we went, you know, plan element by plan element. That was submitted by a deadline. And then we had 636 Medicare eligible retirees moved over to the Hartford plan and about 120 stayed with Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield at that time. Then after a year of data, the board, you know, we again analyzed things. We had a health insurance advisory committee that met regularly. We had finance committee that we typically talk this through, HR committee where we talk this through. The data showed that the Hartford plan was in fact working the way that, that we, we thought it would. It was bringing in both the benefit of the savings and we figured out ways to cover things that weren't, like international travel. We self-insured that by buying a product. Or if there were costs that were uncovered, the district would cover that. That's what self-insurance means. The Hartford itself is a fully insured program, so that means it's not claims-driven, right? So we actually have a fee per person and we pay that monthly to Hartford at that time. And then also the Hartford program, difference from the Blue Cross Blue Shield program, their family plan was actually for two people, right? So it was you and then your dependent. Whereas with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the family is defined actually more, it's 2.75, I think people are, 2.8, something like that. So the cost for a family plan under Blue Cross Blue Shield is not the two-person, the Hartford had that. Then around December 2018, right, that's when everybody moved. At that time, in May 2018, that's when we went out for the budget vote. And that's when my colleague Bob was able to scoop up the employees' benefits program. And I appreciate that, thank you, so that I could focus on the cap project. And that gets us sort of to date of, you know, in 2020 and now. That's when there was a switch from the Hartford, which is the Medicare Supplemental Plan, to the Medicare Advantage Plan as Denise already described. So I, I thank you for your help. I didn't even know you were giving it to me, so thank you all for doing it. That's just the history, right? And then lower on this slide, I just put ongoing, right? There's meetings with the retirees, with whatever advisory committees. E&amp;V is still our consultant. And so that just sort of brings us to date. So I'll turn it over to Bob. I hope that's helpful for everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Amanda. I think it was very helpful for the history. I too want to thank the committee, some of you who are here tonight, others are online, some are not online perhaps. But your work with us has been collaborative, honorable, and important. Though I don't think we're going to reach a resolution here tonight. I do know, I don't rarely speak to the board, right? I've talked to each of them and of course the executive team. We look forward to continuing to collaborate with you and your group. It is important work and it is complicated work. So I don't usually read anything into the records of the board, but I do have a statement that's been informed by our district legal service. So I would, if your indulgence, would just like to read it. "The district has consulted with its health insurance consultant and its outside legal counsel, both of whom have opined that the Medicare Advantage Plan offered by Aetna meets and at times exceeds the district's contractual obligation to retirees. Unfortunately, the district is not legally authorized to offer retirees the option of returning to the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. Given the increased cost of such a plan transfer without a corresponding benefit to the district, offering such an option could constitute a gift to public funds as well as a violation of New York State procurement laws. Given legal counsel's recommendation on this matter, I would recommend that the Board of Education take no further action at this time with respect to transferring current Medicare eligible retirees to the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan." Thank you for your, your time. Stay here to have a conversation.
Yeah, I presume there probably are a couple of questions or reactions. Board members, Jill?
Bob, you mentioned not advising, in fact advising against the return to Blue Cross Blue Shield. How about a return to Hartford?
It's my understanding that at this time, it wouldn't be able to return to Hartford. There is a time window, a pretty short window of opportunity contractually with Aetna that you just simply wouldn't be able to do for this year.
And when, when did that window close or how long is that window open?
It is, it's closed within the last week or so, two weeks. I don't remember the exact date right now when that window closed. But as we had talked about on previous, I think, executive session determining how to proceed, critical legal maneuver, we went forward. That time was like fast approaching. I don't have it on the top of my head right now.
Additional questions?
Well, I would just say that's something that wasn't, I mean, those of us who have met with these folks, particularly that while we were working towards, they're making the recommendation that we were aware of the timeline. But then when their recommendation was simply to allow the option to go to Blue Cross Blue Shield, that the, the idea of going back to the Hartford was not really explored in any detail, like what it would really mean. And, you know, I believe we had some figures when we did the request for proposals from the Hartford, but it never really got discussed because it certainly wasn't their first choice.
I mention it only because it was mentioned by a number of the retirees who wrote in expressing concerns and problems. And a number of them suggested or recommended a return to either Exelis or Hartford. So that's why I mentioned whether that specifically was an option.
The legal reasoning from the council's perspective is that Hartford's too, would also be not cost advantageous to the district either. Not quite as much as going back to the Blue Cross Blue Shield. It certainly would have a cost analysis that probably would end up taking us to the same conclusion.
But because the Hartford is a supplement and not a Medicare advantage, you know, it, it might be argued that that's, that's more akin to what, what they had before under Exelis, what we, because I'm one of them, under Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield had. But, you know, again, if we didn't dig deep into that since the conversations were so much focusing on comparing and what people perceived were the, the advantage to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And as long as I'm talking, I'll continue. So, you know, this is extremely difficult issue for the board. And I would say, you know, maybe for me and Jill particularly because we're both part of the retiree group and we're on the board. And we know so many of the people who write to us and have come to talk to us, people we respect and admire. But this is what I can say about where I'm at, at this moment. That legal constraints aside, we, the board has heard differing versions about what has happened in communications among retirees, Aetna personnel, and E&amp;V folks. We've received emails from retirees indicating that they believe that something that was denied by Aetna would have been covered under Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield. But then we've seen documentation, in at least some cases, that that's not the case. We've seen documentation from Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield saying, we wouldn't have covered this either. So that, you know, creates a, a turn or twist in the narrative. So, you know, none of that, the legal constraints or what I'm seeing as these varying narratives, none of that makes me any less concerned about the distress and the anxiety that some of our retirees have and are experiencing. Personally, I have had no problem with either Hartford or Aetna since 2017, nor have the seven members of my family who are also on the plan. But, and in my personal case, I'm paying quite a bit less for, in premiums, for Aetna. And I paid less for Hartford, but I'm paying even less for Aetna. But even though it's working for me, I have devoted many hours to listening and asking questions, researching, dialoguing, meeting, and trying to understand what other retirees have experienced. And I've devoted many hours committed to seeking solutions and I will continue to do so. At this juncture, there are some things we can do and some things we can't. And as Carl asked, we have and we will continue to probe, to ask questions, both about the legal advice we've received and the information that we're getting from E&amp;V. And the information that we're reading, you know, about Medicare Advantage plans. And what we can't do is what Sandy asked, which is simply cancel the contract with Aetna. As Bob pointed out, the window is closed for changing to another plan for next year. And then the second thing is that we could not, like Sandy was suggesting, just put all of our retirees on another plan, on Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield or even on Hartford because we can't decide for them that they will pay more money, in many cases, more than twice as much in premiums. You know, we can't decide that for them. We can and we will seek solutions, seek more information, continue to seek understanding. And I am absolutely open to supporting changes when I am convinced that the change that's requested is a sound decision or even a legal option.
I'm gonna go to Karen first and then back to Jill, that's fine.
So thank you very much, Amanda and Bob, especially for that timeline because it provided me with more information on what's transpired over the years. I know at one of our previous meetings, we had mentioned about surveys that were done that were, which recorded results of some of the retirees and their concerns and their issues. But not, not even, it wasn't over 50% of the total retirees. Is there a possibility that this can be done again? Or to get further information?
Yeah, I think things are a possibility. I think there was an offer to work with Cornell, I think Cornell, that does, I don't know if they're in the group.
Great, you do a survey of the entire, I don't know what the fee would be. But the Cornell, I'd say, is a free to.
Yeah, we can certainly discuss those type of arrangements.
And, and I know that the concerns with the retirees were from the health insurance consultants might not hear from them. Is there some sort of vetting, not vetting process, but some sort of process where the, is it E&amp;V? Are they going through all of the concerns, addressing all concerns that were brought up by the retirees?
From our perspective, E&amp;V takes each concern that's brought to it and does research and gets back to the retirees. Sometimes if the retiree wants that information shared with us, some have shared with the board members, for example, then the appropriate forms are signed off on, then it's shared with, with us as well. Otherwise, it's more generic about how and what they do for individual retirees. I don't have access, or should I, to their medical records, right, unless they want it to happen?
But we have talked about, because what Karen has really talked to you about is a service issue. And we have talked about ways to perhaps, you know, improve the communication of service with retirees who are having problems.
Now, that'd be something to explore. We used to do some of that in-house and then contracted a third party to make sure, hoping, back taking that, that would take care of some of the service issue. That's another conversation for folks to have. We can take a look at that timeline as well and talk to the service. But Jill and then Aaron.
I have a question, yeah.
Like yield to Erin.
Okay. My question would be, I mean, looking up E&amp;V now, and, and I guess to you and as well to you, I mean, E&amp;V, part of its role is controlling costs, right? Which is important for us as a district. But I'm concerned about like all the stories we hear, these personal stories that we keep hearing. And personally knowing what a mess managed care is, do we have another consultant that we can talk to who is independent of cost control? Who can actually look into these things? I mean, Dr. Shore said, you know, excessive preauthorizations. And I know that our people at E&amp;V have said, no, that's not the case. But I, I would like to know, I would like to hear from someone outside of a controlling cost consulting group who could actually dig into this on, on a more personal, a retiree level, to have a better understanding of these claims and, and those comps that we're getting, you know. I, I want a better understanding of what's happening. So have we looked into other groups to speak to? Or have you, aside from New York Times articles or, or things like that? I mean, do we have any sort of charts comparing, like actual data?
Well, can I respond quickly? Sorry, can I? So Bob will know that we, in the meetings we had in the summer, we talked extensively about getting an independent consultant. We spent a lot of time talking about that.
It doesn't sell insurance like E&amp;V does.
Right. Someone who's, you know, not selling.
Yeah, E&amp;V does not sell insurance.
Sure.
E&amp;V does not sell insurance. They are a broker. And anybody who buys insurance has a broker.
Excuse me, E&amp;V is an insurance provider. Someone who doesn't broker is not a broker for insurance, but solely is a consultant, has no skin in the game.
Well, they don't have skin in the game in terms of, of how they profit from putting us on Aetna versus Blue Cross Blue Shield because, you know, our actives are on Blue Cross Blue Shield. And, you know, whatever company they go with pays them a fee. And so it doesn't matter to them which company you go with.
So I want to get back to the question that Erin is asking, right? If I recall correctly, that is there a possibility of independent, of inquiring with folks who are independent of E&amp;V or Aetna to have some conversations? And I do just want to clarify one point that I understand it in folks, and I may be wrong here, but I'm trying to make way I heard it. It's not that E&amp;V has said there hasn't been excessive preauthorizations, but that E&amp;V has said us that those same preauthorizations would be required under another insurance plan, so.
Or that Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield wouldn't require free authorization but would deny payment?
So you're saying that's incorrect?
That's incorrect.
I just want to make sure, that's fantastic. So the part about an independent, I don't even know if it'd be an auditor, advisor, whatever it may be, that is something that we have not explored in great depth that I'm aware. I know, I know it was a request, I get it from WHIR, right?
Yeah, we're, and us, we collaborated and tried to find someone, I think, you know, technically for a little bit of a different purpose, which was to help us navigate whether or not and to what extent and how we could potentially maneuver people around.
Well, actually, can I speak to this?
Because the point of, you've been making decisions based on the assumption that having retirees with Medicare as primary and then to the secondary piece being Blue Cross Blue Shield would be more expensive. But there's no current data? There is no current data. You wanted an independent consultant to look at current claims or the current population. The data that you were operating on is. for the current population, the data that you were operating on is years old with a different population. So that's why we wanted an independent consultant to actually price out, what would it cost the district to have people on a regional Medicare with Blue Cross Blue Shield as secondary? What would it cost to have a regional Medicare with a, a supplement plan, FRG, versus this, what I would call substandard managed care advantage plan? And then give you that fresh, accurate data by someone who has absolutely no skin in the game. They're just gonna give you, they're gonna now, do an analysis. That hasn't been done, and because of that, I don't think you're working on the best information that you could possibly have. And I'd like to.
We, we would recognize, I, I want to make sure that we get to the question, so I apologize. We recognize that the information is, I recognize that the information is complex and that we are receiving various different pieces of information in data. Right? So let's start there for a second. Jill, you had a, a question as well?
No, I'm, I'm going to follow Bob's lead and read something. If that's, this is a timely moment for it.
It is.
And I'm, I'm going to present a resolution here, and I understand that it may not be everyone's approval, but I feel like this is an important, as well as complicated, issue. And I think it's time for us to vote on where we stand at this point in time, uh, with the understanding that we will undoubtedly be moving forward on this. I will accept friendly revisions after I present the, the resolution. So, whereas the Ithaca City School District has committed to providing health insurance for retirees that is equivalent or better than that provided to current employees, and whereas a significant number of retirees have expressed concern about inadequate or burdensome insurance that is provided by Aetna Managed Care, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education directs the superintendent of schools to provide alternatives to Aetna for retirees. Such alternatives to include but not be limited to previously contracted Hartford Insurance and Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield and ISO.
Second. It's, are we opening up for discussion on this resolution? Oh, okay. Cause it, is it the superintendent of schools or a designate? Cause it seems like there's been, um, the HR committee, I guess, and finance that who have been involved in this whole review. And that's my first question for the resolution, but I'd really like to go back on the surveys. Because even as if we have ENV or any health insurance consultant, it would be good to find out what are the concerns or the issues of the complete population or close to it. We don't have that information. So, like, that's still.
Can I just add one thing?
Um, I apologize.
Okay, can't.
About this, um, forward conversation that we'll.
So I, I question your wording of significant because we have a small proportion of the retirees who are part of this listserv, about a quarter or, or so of the retirees who are part of this listserv, who are the only people that we know got the survey. It was a, my understanding is it was a flawed survey that we can't take accurate data from. And we don't even have a quantitative sense of what percentage of that small percentage have complaints. And I think it was Eileen who said that, uh, three quarters of the denials were overturned. So I am, and the data that we got a month ago from ENV, which has access to all of our employees covered by Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield and all of our employees covered by Aetna, returned a rate of three times the denial from Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield as it does from Aetna. And they, they are the ones who have access to the data from all of our covered employees and retirees. So.
Point of clarification?
So I, to say signif-, I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to say that I agree with Karen that this, this resolution is premature until we have a broader voice and an accurate survey.
Point of clarification. I did not say a significant percentage, which would imply that there was indeed a percentage available, it was a significant number, which was not based on the survey, it was based on the number of emails and concerns we've all heard.
But I don't know how many of those.
No, that doesn't, significant doesn't tell us that.
That, that those were, I, I can't, I can't support the word significant with, with, without having a number attached to it that shows that it would be a, a majority or close to it. And I don't see, I, I know that these individual issues are, are difficult. We all have had problems with insurance. I've had major problems with insurance, and I have a, a, not the plan that you have, not as good a one. But I think that this resolution is premature until we have some, some tangible data.
Other board members that have questions or a discussion of the motion that's on the table?
I, I have to echo what Karen and Pat said, but I also need to understand and, and some way to cross-reference some of the things shared with us uh, from the retirees with difficulty with ENV, because we also heard, and ENV was able to break down, respond to certain situations and difficulties, it was this, what happened. And going back to understanding, is it a service language problem? Is it something inherent in the healthcare system? So we can better understand, and if it is an ENV problem, how can we isolate that and address it? Because based on the information we have, it's, it's not, we can't look at one screen and look at another screen and say, oh, this is this, this is that. And that's where I, I can't say that we should vote on something at this time without Hartford facts that we can cross, that I can cross-reference and isolate for myself.
Other questions, comments? Erin?
If this is premature, is there a way to word a motion to ask for what we need? Which is more information? Like, do we, I mean, do we make another motion? Can we decide on doing something instead of just sitting here still and not, and just waiting? I, I would like to see, I would like to see an independent, I don't wanna say investigation, but an independent consultant review some of these cases, and I don't know how to go about that, but I would, I would like more information.
The only way that could happen at this point in time is if, one, if Jill felt that was a friendly amendment, or two, if the motion was drawn.
Okay.
So if there is a motion on the table, so I don't know if that's a conversation for us to have or not have.
I, I just, I, I just have a procedural question, and I don't know if anyone in the room can answer this. Given the constraints of HIPAA and privacy of medical records, how would an independent consultant have access to the cases that you're asking them to look at?
It probably would have to get folks to sign off on the HIPAA.
I understand you.
Which, I, I don't.
Well, I would dare say that would not be our concern, and that would be the concern of the independent consultant if that's the choice that folks want to go down. Right? So I, I mean, I appreciate the question, and, um, that's all, I think.
Yeah, they could also take the, I suppose they could take a look at the CPT codes, which are the medical codes, and do what ENV has said they have done, which is, you know, compare the medical codes currently to what would have been covered under Blue Cross Blue Shield. And if they would have been covered, then they should be covered here, and if not, then no. And I think that's more what Erin was asking for, if I'm, if I'm correct. Like, uh, denials in particular versus what we were looking for an independent consultant on was, was savings and whether or not the figures you're currently using demonstrate significant savings. And we said they are. So I think, I think they're just slightly different.
I, I believe that they are, yeah. And I, and to clarify, you know, I cited one example of what someone shared. There's more things that I, I would like more clarity on, you know, like, you know, reduced panels of doctors and hospitals to choose from. Denials for nursing home care, denials for PT, things like that, which, you know, we have the statistics and codes. But when you get more of a story into that and someone reviewing that, it's more than just codes, right? It's, and so I would like that information for people who are willing to share it for an independent investigator, sorry, that is just not, that word is too. Thank you.
I'll cut it out.
It sounds like investigation. Yeah, I would really, I, I think it would be very useful to get more information.
I just want to make the comment to everyone that I, I, at a fundamental level, share the concern of Medicare plus supplement versus Medicare Advantage. And these are, these are, these are new, relatively new. And issues have been raised, but that we don't have the data to say that they are all bad or they're going to be all bad. Just like there are good and bad supplemental plans. I'm sure there are good and bad advantage plans. What I do, you don't know either, I mean, that there are no good ones. And there is increasing government regulation and, uh, coming with advantage plans and stipulation that they, they spend a certain amount of, like, a certain percentage of everything they come in. So it's not just like they're going to be churning and making money. And as Moira has noted, noted many times, they are considerably less expensive. And so thus our, our concern about unilaterally switching everyone in that retiring pool to, to something that's going to cost them thousands of more dollars a year. That means a lot to a lot of people. But I do share the concern about people in a group plan who have not made their own choice to go to advantage. And I want to explore options.
So I'm hearing two different things that are out there. One is Jill's original motion, which is to strike a superintendent to find an alternative insurance.
To provide alternatives for retirees.
Yes, and then Erin asking about whether or not we would consider doing some sort of independent analysis. Does that, does that make work phrasing this?
Of course, yeah.
So I'm trying to figure out, Jill, I'm looking to you because you made a motion.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not willing to withdraw my motion. I will call for a vote. I'm also more than in support of gathering more data on just about anything at any time, including this. So I will call for a vote on this.
Karen, you had your hand raised.
Not if she's not willing to withdraw the motion. I was gonna say, in, in addition to the independent analysis, I, I guess that's included my survey request of the complete retiree population.
I don't hear that in the motion, but.
That's not in the motion, that's why I want clarification, so, um, but if you're not willing to withdraw that from the motion.
No, but.
Not willing to.
I could get another resolution going pretty quickly. If you want.
All right, is there any other discussion?
I guess I'm starting to think, or I'm thinking that, as Pat said, Jill's resolution may be premature, but a couple things need to happen. Now, in the, the group that met over the summer, starting last spring, there was discussion of independent analysis. We had some difficulty finding someone we could agree on. So if we were to take a stab at that again, I'm not sure where we begin.
I think, given the, the difference in what we've been looking for, I don't know for sure, we'd have to check, but I, I think it would open it up to more, like an auditing firm could do, I think.
So Bob, I'm gonna stop you, I apologize, because I appreciate what you're saying. We may get back to that point in time, but that is not the motion that's on the table. The motion that's on the table is to instruct the superintendent to find an alternative. I heard if there's additional conversation about that, then let's engage that. If there's another motion that follows talking about independent analysis, then we can engage in that conversation as well. I just want to make sure that we're staying on track. If there's additional questions about Jill's motion, and maybe it may help board members to hear the motion again, that's been segments that we know what people will be voting on.
Certainly. Whereas the Ithaca City School District has committed to providing health insurance, health insurance for retirees that is equivalent or better than that provided to current employees, and whereas a significant number of retirees have expressed concern about inadequate or burdensome insurance provided by Aetna, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education directs the superintendent of schools to provide alternatives to Aetna for retirees. Such alternatives to include but not be limited to the previously contracted Hartford Insurance and Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yes, Karen.
Thank you for the rereading, because you did have significant, as Pat had brought out before, significant number of retirees, and that's where my disagreement is, that it's not a significant number. If we saw on here, there are seven hundred and thirty-six employees at one point, retirees, sorry. And, um, the population that was surveyed was about one hundred plus or something like that, I can't remember.
Five, one twenty-five, one twenty-five.
Yeah, that, that's not a significant number, and that's why I keep going back to this survey, so.
I would take a friendly amendment and remove significant number and just say, whereas retirees have expressed concern.
Well, I'm also concerned about the other, another alternative, as if it's another alternative, another plan, when I really want this survey to go through not only the savings, but the denials and how many people really were impacted. So is that, that independent analysis a full analysis of it or not?
So to keep us moving forward, what I would recommend, if there's not additional questions about the actual resolution, is that we do call the vote. It does not preclude us from entertaining additional motions that may get what other folks have asked for. I just want to make sure we stay on track more.
Here in the, the, uh, resolution again, I have a question about the superintendent providing alternatives to retirees or providing alternatives for the board to consider offering retirees. If that makes sense?
Yes, and I guess, I guess Erin, no, Karen has pointed out that obviously the superintendent doesn't do all of this, it's obviously his designate, but that's my presumption, saying superintendent, since that's the person we look to and delegate to. No, in the interest of, of moving forward, I would like to stick with, to include alternatives to retirees. And obviously, he would be consulting with the board as he move forward on that.
Run a clarification, I know it might be out of line, but based on the information received tonight, recommendations and the information by attorneys, the superintendent offered alternatives that are, should be, have something about how, that have been vetted through legal counsel, that are legal. Cause that could be offering a multiple alternative that wouldn't pass the test of criminal law and et cetera. But I just want to be clear about what is it that I would be offering? We've been hearing for months now that there aren't any other alternatives to offer. Whereas this resolution would be asking me and my designated team right in front of the board, consider alternatives. Let's just be clear about what we're asking us to present. Cause I could come back and say, I don't have enough alternative, haven't talked to multiple attorneys, different law firms, et cetera. And that would put me in violation of the revolution? Or I could just give you some alternatives, I would put everyone back. And then that resolves then a significant lawsuit, as already shared with us right after that. So I would appreciate some clarification.
Jill, I keep looking to you, not because I don't want to answer the question.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I just wanted.
It's your motion, so that's why I'm being, I'm being serious.
It is my motion, thank you. I wanted a second to think there. Well, I'm, I, obviously I would want there to be legal alternatives, but anything could be challenged legally. So we can't say that just because someone at some point might say that alternative is not a good one, that we therefore can't. Yeah, so.
I'm just telling my inner activist.
I, I get it, yeah. It, it could be.
Cause this is the revolution y'all be voting on to ask me maybe potentially to put you in.
Right, right. I mean, I could, I could spend a lot of time on this and say, you know, we would look at various criteria for alternatives and all of that. you know, we would look at various criteria for alternatives and all of that, but I think that's not where I am right now. I, I think where I am is saying, I'm not happy with the not do anything else at this point option. Because I think it's gone on, personally, I think it's gone on too long. But you know, again, with all due respect to the people who've been working so hard on it, I think it's time. We missed one window, I don't wanna be in this position a year from now.
I'm gonna step outside of my president role for a second and say, as folks on the board who've been a long time, know me, I think I may have the record and extensions in ICSD board history. I am normally uncomfortable with voting with any resolution without the opportunity to read it word for word. And so that's something that I struggle with as well, like I need to see it, I wanna read it, I wanna highlight it, I wanna do whatever. And so just as a heads up, it's gonna be uncomfortable to make for me. Even, and I completely appreciate that some action needs to take place. So I'm trying to find that balance, but I'm back in the president's role again. Additional questions before we call the vote, discussion points?
I mean, are there options to table it, to give folks time to review until the next voting meeting?
I get the, maybe not, I apologize.
No, it could be resurrected at any point, but I'm, I'm not interested in tabling it, right?
All right, there's no other discussion points, we will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? I'm sorry. I apologize. All those abstaining? The resolution, the motion does not pass. Is there a next step that we, the board, like to entertain while we're on this topic?
Okay, I would like to, but I'm terrible at wording this stuff. But I'd like to move, I move that the board requests independent analysis of our healthcare offerings to retirees, including a survey, a proper survey. Yes, thank you, including proper survey results. Of all retirees.
Of course. No, not that, I'm sorry, I'm talking to my computer. Right, no.
Sure, sure, Sean.
I apologize. Uh, what I was trying to do is see if we could create a Google Doc, or we could type this out and everyone could see it. So we know exactly again what we're voting on and what we're asking to do. And Tricia, I don't know if I can type it up here and then email to you so we can put it up?
Do you want her to restate it so we can?
Or someone begin typing it?
All right, let me try to type it, I'm a better writer than speaker sometimes.
All right, Tricia, I'm gonna send you the link in a second. Erin, where do we find ourselves to make sure that we're?
I'm gonna have Chris look it over my shoulder, because you know, he's better at this. Then do you want me to read it or send it to somebody? I have to read it, don't I?
Um, you can also email to me right now if you like, and and read it, and at the same time, I will send it to Tricia.
Okay, motion to conduct an independent analysis of ICSD health insurance offerings to retirees, including a comprehensive survey of all retirees' experiences and outcomes.
A second.
Okay, can I make a suggestion that we say Medicare eligible retirees?
Thank you.
Thank you. I already sent it, I'm, you can just.
Yeah, I'm waiting for it to arrive. Tricia, I just sent you, you should probably close before we open up any email. Before we open up any. Erin, I apologize, what email did you send it to me?
Uh, your Gmail.
My Gmail.
I meant to do both, I'm sorry. Oh, that's interesting. Jill said maybe do both Medicare eligible and all, right, separate them?
Yeah, separate, wouldn't that make sense? Because.
In terms of, oh.
Because we're, we're curious about what all those other retirees are feeling too.
Right, because it's, surveys get a different.
Wouldn't it be friendly to say all retirees with a particular, with a particular focus on Medicare eligible? Or, I don't know if that's friendly or not.
Or how about questions? I mean, there needs, I mean, there needs to be questions directed specifically to issues with Medicare. So I mean, that's what we need to designate, right?
Yep, I see.
I mean, that's, that's the issue we are looking at right now, is Medicare eligible retirees not changing anything for non-Medicare eligible retirees, so the simpler the better.
I think it's simpler the better, but I'm wondering with us doing this and we are thinking of cost, wouldn't it be more cost effective to do it all at once rather than saying, oh, I wish we would have gotten this information, right?
The number of non-Medicare eligible retirees is, may not be statistically significant. It's in the single digits.
Is that true?
Is that?
Really?
Do you do that?
Who told you?
I just, I look at the breakdown.
We, oh.
I mean, I don't have it pulled up from last month. I thought it was like.
I think the first identifier has to really be what status or what stage you're in as a retiree. Because most of the emails that we receive always say, it generalizes and say all retirees or retirees. So we need to really break down and specify, but that's going into the further how to get the qualitative and quantitative results of the survey, which we're not gonna go through that now, having developed this survey.
None, none of us are trans statisticians, are we? I, I mean, I really, I, I.
I actually had a number of graduates.
Actually, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty close as well.
Yes. The emails is mandatory, so.
So this is the motion as I'm standing on the table, Erin, can you take a look to make sure it's what you sent me and captures what you have asked?
Medicare Advantage, correct?
Well, that's what I was suggesting, but now they're suggesting that.
You mean Medicare eligible or medical, yeah.
Medicare eligible. Medicare eligible, yeah.
We're in it now.
To Medicare eligible retirees.
And where would that be?
Right before the word retirees.
At the first time, right?
Right here?
Yeah.
That's what you agreed to?
I, I mean, I think, yeah, yeah, I think, well, I, I mean, I would like to ask the board if they think that we should survey all retirees or just Medicare, or have, you know, specific questions for Medicare retirees and a general survey for all retirees.
We are, we are trying, my opinion is we are trying to determine the level of satisfaction or dissatisfaction with the current plan and how, how many people within the Medicare eligible retiree group would or would not support a different plan.
And specifically focus on Medicare eligible.
And that, those are, that's the group that, that has brought these concerns to us. No one from the other group has brought concerns to us, it's a very small group.
Medicare of compared.
But it's also your, your feeling from something you saw that it's a small percentage of retirees that are, okay.
Retirees under sixty five.
Yeah, okay, I feel bad about that.
My concern about this motion is it's near impossible to do a comprehensive survey of all retirees. So I don't know what the language workaround is, but we know with survey data, depending on what the response rate is, sometimes thirty five percent is amazing, sometimes sixty percent is amazing. But to presume that we're gonna have seven hundred people respond, and I understand the intent behind it, but the directive is that we would survey all retirees, and I'm just trying to make sure we understand this.
Remove the word all, here goes more policies.
For me, a comprehensive survey includes reaching out to all, and maybe that's what it is, right?
I think you don't, you do wanna reach out to all, they may not respond, yeah.
Without, without question, that's different than
Except all retirees.
Including a comprehensive survey of all retirees' experiences and outcomes is, is very difficult to do, as opposed to.
To gather all. To survey.
But, but no, what he's saying is specify that we will reach out to all retirees, but we, we will not.
With the intention of.
We will not be able to review all retirees' experiences and outcomes, because we will not even get.
That is the nuance I'm trying to capture.
Yeah.
And I don't know how to phrase it, but thank you for that, that's what I'm trying to say. We without question must do outreach to all.
Well, what if we said a comprehensive survey provided to all retirees on their experiences and outcome? Like? Offered to?
Offered to. Targeted.
Targeted.
Available to? Where are we, including a comprehensive survey offered to, available to? Offered to our retirees in order to?
Better understand or?
My eleventh grade English teacher would not be happy to leave this sentence alone.
Let me see here tonight.
Where she, she watches, trust me, Miss, hello, Miss Katrina. Motion to conduct an independent analysis of ICSD health insurance offerings to Medicare eligible retirees, including a comprehensive survey offered to all retirees in order to better understand retiree experiences. Where, in order to? Order to. Um, Mike, again, that's the idea of offerings and offer.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's.
And just one more, this is, I think, the difficulty in.
What if we said sent, we're gonna send for survey to all retirees.
Engaging all retirees. Well, no, I, I'm looking at the beginning of this, obviously the board is not going to conduct this. We need to, we need to empower the district to find means to, like, we're not gonna, we're not going to put this together.
Motion to order an independent analysis.
Direct the superintendent to order it.
I'm hearing multiple things, I wanna make sure I capture.
Motion. Motion to direct the superintendent.
To conduct.
To conduct.
Or designate, we always say superiors or designate.
I think here we should probably say superintendent. And can I say, in order to conduct or contract an independent analysis?
Yeah, it would not be us to conduct.
I, yep, I touch one.
Just say contract, because we, we are not going to, the, the district is not going to conduct it.
It wouldn't be independent if we did.
To enter into a contract with an independent contractor. To conduct an analysis. Right, and then, and then.
I'm waiting, the motion is on the table, I'm waiting for Erin, so we.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
No, no, just to make sure that it's friendly, we don't have to go ahead.
Okay, motion to direct the superintendent to contract an independent analysis of ICSD health insurance offerings to Medicare eligible retirees, including a comprehensive survey.
Of a period. This to include.
Or, yeah, or a semicolon, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And then take the ing. This to include a comprehensive survey offered to all retirees in order to better understand retiree experiences and outcomes.
That's an improvement, because that shows that the survey will be only part of
Oh, thank you.
An independent analysis, will not be the sole.
In order to unders, in order to better understand retiree healthcare coverage experiences and outcomes?
Yeah.
That's okay by you.
But, yeah, thank you, I don't wanna know about, you know, you don't vacationing or anything, no.
So I wanna make sure if this is, again, this was moved by, or off, presented by Erin, it was seconded by Chris. Erin, it sounds like most of the suggestions you find to be friendly at this point in time. I also wanna make sure that you're gonna keep your second as well, Chris.
Yes, I will.
Discussion.
Okay. Oh, that's why I guess I had to wait for that discussion point. I'd like to change that, and can I change that, or?
You can offer.
Okay, I will, like to offer changes, it's not in order to better understand, but to gather healthcare coverage experience and outcomes. Whether or not we understand it.
We're gathering data.
To gather.
Data, yeah.
Gather data related to.
Yes, there you go.
Yes, yes.
This has turned into a policy committee. Which is absolutely essential and useful in pushing us forward, so I appreciate that, but I just wanna make sure, again, if we're voting on it, I'm aware of the historic relevance of our votes and what we put, what we put down, so. Should I be helpful, give her time and see what other questions?
Needs related to.
I don't like twos apparently. Motion to direct the superintendent to contract an independent analysis of ICSD health insurance offerings to Medicare eligible retirees. This is to include a comprehensive survey offered to all retirees in order to gather data related to retiree healthcare coverage experience and outcomes. For boast, but I think it speaks to, yes, Chris?
Shouldn't saying Bob helped me with this, enter into a contract agreement with, or does the superintendent that contract and, does it?
And then, does this then come into conflict, I apologize, does it come into conflict with the procurement laws and policies board has? Because I'm not typically allowed to enter into a contract without board approval.
This is motion by the board.
But, but we don't know what he's gonna come back with.
Yeah, and I.
Oh.
I wanna be just completely independent, because there may be questions about who I, I E. us select without having it vetted by you first, which I think also comes into conflict with the board policy.
So we shouldn't be, so basically, what, what you're saying is we should not be putting forward a motion to have you do something without us oversight, we should, perhaps we should direct you to come back to us.
With a recommendation.
With a recommendation.
Yeah, direct me to do whatever you want, just, but I think we're getting into a place where we are breaking some procurement laws and board policies by the ass of the superintendent.
So motion, motion to direct the superintendent to, I just asked.
Provide the district with a recommendation or independent analysis.
Right, or to recommend, yeah, to recommend an independent analysis, yes.
And let us come back with a proposal to do something.
To not, yeah.
That would involve us.
Um, so, my apologies that we're gonna continue to spin over this for a minute, this as it reads, then Dr. Brown can come back and say, I recommended independent analysis. That's the way in which the motion reads.
Right.
What we're looking for is to provide a recommendation of an independent
Yes.
Analysis, right, of someone who can conduct an independent analysis, not just conduct an independent analysis.
Yeah.
So how are we gonna, am I, my apologies, am I making sense?
You're making sense.
Yes.
Now we just have to get into words that make sense.
This is why we spend three to four days before board meetings, trying to write motions to make sure we get it right, but motion to direct the superintendent to provide the board.
With a recommendation.
For in, in that analysis, in the rest.
Yeah.
Motion to direct the superintendent to.
To provide the board with.
I think that captures some of the other aspects for, of this evening as well, as well as alternatives and all. I think that captures some of the other asks for uh this evening as well, as well as alternatives and all that, it just captures it, any recommendations?
Motion to direct the superintendent to provide the board with a recommendation for an independent analysis of ICSD health insurance offerings to Medicare eligible retirees. Stop there for a second. So far, we're on board with that, at least discussion can happen in a minute. This is to include a comprehensive survey offered to all retirees in order to gather data related to retiree health insurance coverage experience. And outcomes, and I think I would just say related to health insurance, healthcare coverage, but I understand the idea, we want the experience of else, so.
I I agree with healthcare coverage.
It's not, it's not my motion.
I mean, I, it's healthcare coverage, but I think that if we don't say something about.
Right.
Experiences and outcomes, we're missing some of those, you know, we wanna know, we want data, or sorry, what I'm proposing here would provide data for.
Yep.
These personal stories worth hearing about, right, some clarity on, is this actually happening only here?
Yep.
Or does it indeed happen no matter what you choose, right?
Alright, additional questions, yes, Dr. Brown?
Um typically, I would ask for a timestamp here as part of the resolution by next day, but this kind of qualitative analysis.
That was my next, yeah.
Especially kind of with independent stories and speak data could take months if not longer. So I wanted to have the conversation out now, so that folks aren't looking for us to come back with a recommendation for this data to be collected in a matter of weeks.
I as, I would be much more interested in a timestamp for the recommendation.
Yeah.
Right.
Cool, I just wanted to make sure.
Than the next step, right, because that would then is something that within the contract, if we were to hire an independent audit. We can include that ties timestamp with them and not with anybody else. So if I'm looking at the two of you, what is, where are we at, how long would this take to come back, to come back with the board with the recommendation?
I think we're as eager as anybody else to move forward, so uh I would offer a next board meeting, but if you can give us a little bit longer than that, the first. We're gonna be talking about the calendar next, so uh that last meeting in November, whatever that day may be.
The argument, it'll be after Thanksgiving would be the last day, but last meeting in November would be after Thanksgiving.
November twenty-nine.
If we if we agree on this change.
If we, correct, right, the motion has now passed. And I don't know if that needs to be in writing, if that's an expectation, how does the board want to see?
Rather than to put it into this motion because.
Yeah.
You know, what if no one gets back to him until mid-December? Then we have to redo the motions.
And some other conversations to have.
That's that's in my field.
There's a very real, given what we went through, reality that what you're asking for will not be done by one contractor. And. Independent also has to be better defined, because independent to us means something, independent to bespoke means something perhaps different. What does it mean for for the person to be independent, especially as it relates to their ability to determine the cost savings? What we ran into is that it takes someone in the business, and typically, if you're in the business. You're you're broker and you're selling, you're not independent necessarily, in the same way that we wanted to be.
So my, sorry.
Someone, I'm sorry, someone to do an audit of delays as they relate to pre-authorization procedures. Or where the denials ended up, that to my mind possibly could be an auditing firm, right, and and there you open it up. Our ability to find someone that was a independent and knew the business significantly enough to look at the complexities of our savings. I I don't know if it could be a finding.
So I appreciate the fact that we may want more specificity with the idea of what independent is, I would be of the position that if this were passed. I would keep it as is and have that conversation with the recommendation as brought to us.
Yeah.
Right, then we can debate what that is.
Yeah. Then we can say how independent is this person, yeah.
Right, but at this point in time, what I'm understanding from a number of, from some members of the board. Is that there is a desire to have some action, this is a motion that puts us in doing some action as soon as we can. With an expectation that we will get updates, maybe at the next board meeting, maybe at the one after, but without question for the one after that. And all these other questions we would have to work through, and I imagine we're gonna be in contact with folks as well. Should I call the question? Couple of head nods. Not to vote yes, but just to call the question. Alright, here is the motion here. You've just read it, I don't need to read it again, correct, or would you like for me to read it one more time? Fantastic, calling the question, all those in favor? That is unanimous for.
Cancel Karen, Karen, you're in.
Oh, yeah.
They're paying those.
Fantastic.
We're gonna work with different electronic voting.
Yes, that would been much longer. Bob and Amanda, thank you for the updates to our retirees that are in the room, thank you as well, again, I'm sure we'll be in contact. For folks on the board, thank you for your patience in trying to get us to have some motion to pass, and we'll make sure that we get the language out to folks and capture it in our minutes as well. Fantastic. It is nine o'clock, nine-ten, is the goal, to just keep pushing through, do folks need to stretch for a minute? Keep pushing through, fantastic. Item eleven point two is the Board of Education November meeting schedule. This has come to our attention because the way in which our meeting schedule is currently set. We are to have a full boarding then meeting on November eighth, which is election day. And then our next Board of Education meeting would be on the twenty-second, which is the day before Thanksgiving break. We had had a conversation over the years about not having board meetings on election day. And not having board meetings on the day of of the last day of a break or when break is in session. So the idea was, and we, this does not require a vote, um but without question, conversation, discussion. Is that we would move our voting meetings from the eighth to the fifteenth and from the twenty-second to the twenty-ninth. That those will be the new November full voting meetings, November fifteenth and November twenty-ninth. With the possibility for those folks who may agree that we would do a finance facilities joint committee meeting on Tuesday the seventeenth. Excuse me, on Thursday the seventeenth. Should I write all those dates down as well? I did email them one point time, but wanna make sure we're having them public, so November first would still be H R and policy. The week of November eighth, there would not be a board meeting, November fifteenth would be a full board meeting, November seventeenth would be a committee meeting. There would not be a board meeting the week of Thanksgiving break, and there would be one on the twenty-ninth. Discussion, questions, concerns? Uh I do wanna highlight something that Karen noted, that's okay that I highlighted Karen, that it would remove our pre-scheduled board development session that was scheduled for October. Excuse me, November twenty-ninth, but it does not preclude us from selecting another date and time, should the board choose to do so, having a board development session. You can hold one at any time to the board, like. Maybe in like forty-five minutes. So if that's okay, then we'll have Tricia update our calendars if I'm not hearing any. And then we'll get that out in public, we'll work with our communication team to get those that out as well, update the website and everything else.
It's a delightful idea.
Fantastic, and I tried to go through the rest of the calendar and I'll let you know if there's one other date, but we'll we'll do that another time. Fantastic, thank you all very much, we'll update that. There are a couple of items, if I'm gonna keep keep moving, um we have uh an agenda, item twelve point one. It is listed here as the facilities city of Ithaca proposal for a B JAM GAC land swap and temporary easements. This is a proposal that was brought by the city of Ithaca for the GAC teen space program. Um it is connected to the referendum that um did not pass this past May. Um and folks continue to be creative to find another solution. Uh and came with a either sub-ground or subterranean um land swap between the city and the school district. Jill, Karen and I um all have the privilege of attending a meeting with some members of the B JAM community. There did seem to be support uh with that group there, we did ask folks to make sure they did outreach to folks. Um I know uh Jackie Richardson and Leslie Mimi Clarborn have been in communication. Um and seem to be in support and understanding that the temporary easement would um take part of the B JAM land for a year during construction. And then be returned, there is a infographic that has been out by our communication team, has been sent to B JAM families, I hope. Uh and that we can send to other folks as well for additional clarification, originally, it was scheduled for us to vote on it this evening. We are still waiting on the um direct language of all four resolutions that will be needed to happen. So we will not vote on it this evening, but wanted to make sure that we spoke to it, to make sure that folks were aware, to reach out, it's on our website. Folks can find additional information by contacting uh Jackie Richardson, by contacting uh any board member, and by contacting Leslie Mimi Clarborn. Any additions or comments, anything that I'm missing about this proposal, yes, Jill?
I I think um I would just add that it is a much scaled down proposal and that um the GAC folks in the city made a great. Great deal of a point about it not just being an expansion of the gym, but expansion of program space for many of the programs that GAC conducts. Including school-aged children, um childcare, so um anyone who has concerns about this, I do hope they'll. They'll reach out because it's a it's a relatively minimal um ask from the school district for a lot of um gains for uh community children.
Absolutely.
Okay, then we'll keep moving, um item uh elec, or twelve point two, this is a resolution for a code of conduct public hearing. Excuse me, I have not checked board docs, is the code of conduct draft available upon our?
It is.
It is?
Yep.
Um so what we would be voting on here is the announcement of a public hearing, which needs forty-five days at least of advance notice. We would not be voting to adopt a code of conduct, we would not be voting to say this is the code of conduct. We would simply be voting to present with a public hearing. In addition to additional listening sessions that Dr. Bryman and Lily Talkip will be engaging with both community members, students, teachers, et cetera. So there is a long list of feedback sessions that we've gone through. I will spare everyone of the five-year history of how we got here, um but this is where we're at, and it's a um. I will just say personally, a uh a much better document, and we're still um looking for as much feedback as possible. So that's where at, it's a draft version to announce a public hearing, so. Don't know where that leaves us.
What what date are we setting?
December thirteenth, is that correct?
I think it says November twenty-fifth. Yeah, if I remember twenty-fifth.
That's like.
That's not forty-five days, Sean's right.
It's also Thanksgiving.
I had I had December thirteenth on my calendar, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, you're right. I don't know why it says.
Mine's.
Mine was blank, yeah.
Mine's blank, yeah.
Right, because we are gonna fill it in this evening. With the announcements.
Alright.
So it would, we were we were originally scheduled to do it in November, and we didn't think that would give people the appropriate amount of time when everything was going on.
Okay.
So then we thought having it in the middle of December, despite the fact that everything else is going on, would be a much better date for folks.
Sure.
December thirteenth is a Tuesday.
It's a morning.
It is.
Yep.
So it would be, we would have it before the board.
We would have it before the meeting as we've done with a good portion of our other public hearings.
Yes.
So on the thirteenth day.
Yep.
Of December.
Yes.
Twenty twenty-two at five P M.
At five P M. And this would not be the only way in which folks do have feedback, but we are mandated to have a public hearing.
Treating it to the family tradition of of grandma has to be at a board meeting, can't be with the.
Bring him.
Yes, that would be a treat.
So. If this is something that folks feel like we can move, I will entertain reflections.
I move that we approve this.
I second.
Did you capture that? We're all, we're all in agreement that the date is Tuesday, December thirteenth at five P M. And we will start disseminating the current version, the draft, and I believe it has been watermarked, right, Katie and Margo, so. Um and before we go any further, let me just offer public thanks to the work that Katie and Margo have done. Um Dan and Lily have done amazing work as well, but in terms of uh being uh copy editors and catching things and some of the formatting. Um I know it was a long weekend to get it ready for today, and so it's just greatly appreciative and want to say that in public for for both of your work. Any further discussion about? We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Passes unanimously, for those folks who are here, thank you very much. And we're making progress, uh twelve point three um is the audit committee composition, we thought in order to be safe. That um because we voted at the reorg meeting, that our audit committee would comprise two community members along with a board member. Um Amanda did additional research um and found out that that is one possibility of a composition of our audit committee. We can also have a composition of our audit committee, which includes three board members and still maintaining one of our community members, given that the two folks that we. Um voted in, one had to resign from the committee, and so that we felt it would be wise to correct that vote as well. Maintain Ann Reichlin as the community member, um but then appoint myself, Moira and Chris Malcolm. And any other board member who wants an exciting audit committee to join us, but as the official members of the audit committee, that it would be Chris, uh Moira and myself.
I move to approve the following, the appointment of the audit committee, second.
Saying bless you all, is that true?
That was Jill, any discussion, questions? Call the question, all those in favor? Well, Moira, Moira was a little slow, but. So if that's.
Well, like I missed my aftermost words, it's like forgot elected chair.
That is, I forgot you are elected chair, fantastic. Um we've had part of this conversation, twelve point five, again, during the reorg meeting. We voted the legislative advocacy committee to be a standing committee of the board, we're having a conversation that we do not seem to have the um personnel. Right, the ban at this point in time does not mean that the committee could not be re-upped next year, but for this year, again, because it was already voted on. We are entertaining a motion to officially remove as a standing committee for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic year.
I move to remove the legislative advocacy committee as a standing committee for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three uh academic year.
Second.
Begrudgingly seconded by Aaron, we understand that, Aaron, we're with you on that as well. Discussion, questions? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Um the hybrid meeting, and next time we will move our agenda, make sure that we put the Morocco trip up before, I apologize if I did put this. The hybrid meeting, um we have a motion that was on the table, the last time we had this conversation, we were asked to change some of the language. The um document that you see that includes some of the highlight things were things that I highlighted, they're not from anybody else, it was just to make sure that we all had an understanding. Of some of the changes that would take place, um if the board chooses to approve a um a hybrid option. The key thing to bear in mind, or two things for me to bear in mind, would one is we would always need a quorum in-person. So we would always need an in-person quorum, and if there was going to be hybrid participation, that would have to be announced along with the announcement of the meeting. So we would need. So we would need advanced notice. So when the meeting was announced, we would have to also announce a hybrid option. If we are simply streaming for other participation and/or public comment, then we would not have to make that announcement.
As a point of clarification, since, since illness can come on suddenly, under this. If I got sick on Tuesday morning, I would not be requesting to join as a, in a hybrid form. I would, like in all years past, in the before times, just stay home and be sick.
That is, that is obvious. Or, or you can watch. Spend your sick time watching a meeting. But yes, you would not, under this policy, you would not be allowed to participate if it's happened within twenty four hours of the board, of the meeting happening. This is for public notice as well. And I don't know if there are other questions that folks may have. Again, the highlights are my highlights than anybody else's. I, I can take the verbal hint.
Karen, yes. Question, so for committees, we also have to have a quorum?
In person.
In person.
So that's two out of the three committees.
Two out of the three. Committees, as I understand the legal definition, are empowered to do work of the district. And if we're doing work of the district, then we need an in-person quorum.
I move to, to approve the written procedure for the use of video convincing for the conduct of public meetings.
Second.
Any additional questions? And just to know that we did recognize that there may be times that folks may have to turn their camera off. Right, so the language has been shifted where it's not at all times, right? That part we understand. Alright, no other conversation, all in favor? All oppose, that's everyone but Chris, all opposed. Chris Malcolm. It'll be a fun ride home when I call you to talk more. Next item, did you capture that, Chris? Item twelve point seven, international field trip to Morocco. And we're just talking about students, so this is gonna refresh us.
I have no idea who put the, the gender in disorder. I just want.
It was me and I will not make that mistake again.
Do you guys have this in your paper?
Yes.
Yes, we have it. We have it in the board docs.
Okay, how do we get our screen?
Gio. How do we get our screen to show up there?
Are you trying to show the two documents that we have already?
No. Okay, I'm gonna just share it with Gio.
Share with Tricia?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Liz Crawford.
And I'm Ludi Augustin and here.
I, I did.
And we are here to request approval for an international trip. We are hoping to revive the Morocco trip. That, the Morocco cultural exchange trip that had been for several years successfully until COVID interrupted it and it's had to be canceled several times now, unfortunately for the students who have now graduated and no longer participate in it. So. When the slides get up, I'm gonna go ahead and just keep moving and talking about it, but.
I don't have it yet.
Okay.
It just took about three minutes for me to get it, an email from someone just.
It did, okay. So I might just, so we'll, I'll talk about it and then we can show the slides. So the Morocco cultural exchange program happened, this would be the fourth annual. You have in front of you some of the details of the, the trip. We would be traveling to Morocco, to northwest Africa, beautiful, interesting country. We are lucky to have Liz, who lived there for quite some time and has traveled there a number of times. And has done this trip in the past. I would be new to this, but I'm very excited about it. We have, we conducted application of process last spring. And we have twenty four really fabulous group of diverse, interested, excited students. You can see there that approximately forty two percent are students of color. Students who are requesting financial assistance are about six and we think that we can really meet all of their financial requests. Because we sent out an application to the students who are going on the trip. We have four really fabulous chaperones, if I do say so myself, myself, Liz, Sarah Schenk, who also teaches at the high school, and Joe Xantus, who teaches social studies at DeWitt. We, you can see the tentative itinerary. We would be flying in and out of Casablanca. We'd have an opportunity to go to Rabat. We would be doing some cultural exchange with a school, which we'll talk about more in a few moments. And you can see in a moment, there'll be a little map. So can.
She's fabulous.
So we're ready for the next slide here. Thank you. Of course. Yeah, there it is. So we'd be flying in Casablanca, we'd go to Rabat. The school that we would be collaborating with is in Canitra. We'd be going up as far north as Chauvin. And some time in Fez as well. I imagine we didn't quite get over there. And so if you'd move to the next one for us, please, thank you. You know, Morocco is a, is predominantly Arab and Berber, makes up ninety percent of the population. It's predominantly Muslim and it's, although there's also been a long time Jewish population in Morocco as well. There's a variety of languages, some of which our students might get to practice and some are, are ones that are not offered at the high school, but that they'll be exposed to. We're gonna be collaborating with some local experts on workshops around language so that we can interact appropriately and at least start with a hello. And then also religion, culture. What are some, you know, appropriate ways that you conduct yourself when you go into a mosque, for example, and those sorts of things? So working with some local experts so that students feel prepared, as well as doing that sort of cultural exploration while we're in the country as well.
There it is. The goal of this trip has always been to connect our students with Moroccan peers, students of their own age in Morocco. And we partner with a school in Canitra and students actually have a chance to attend classes with their Moroccan counterparts through that school. In the past, our students have established really meaningful and lasting connections with folks that they met in Morocco. They also have a chance to learn about Morocco's history, its diverse cultures and languages. One of our goals has always been to combat harmful stereotypes that exist in American culture about Islamic countries and about Muslims. And I think one of the most important ways to combat a stereotype like that is to have real and meaningful interaction and relationship with people in a different part of the world. And this field trip seeks to allow that opportunity for students of ours and for them to bring what they've learned back and share it with their community here. Let's look to the next slide.
So costs and funding. The estimated cost, as, as far as we can tell at this point, is about two thousand two hundred dollars per student. We will be doing quite a bit of fundraising in the next few months. And that fundraising, everyone must participate in and it will lower the cost for everyone. So it is not just certain students doing the fundraiser, raising and others not. We have applied for some grants, including from IPEI totaling one thousand seven hundred and fifty. And we're planning to offer six scholarships to meet the requested needs per the, the financially aid request that we sent out to all of the families.
The homestays are still something that we're working with. In the past, students have had an opportunity to have homestays with the students that they're working with in Canitra. The school is called the British Town Language School and the, most of the students there will have some experience with English, varying degrees of mastery with the language. They should be able to communicate with our students. The way the homestays have worked in the past, we've had two or three of our students per Moroccan family. So no student is ever isolated and away, like completely on their own in an unfamiliar environment. And it provides these students with a really unique opportunity to see Moroccan family life, to see, to eat meals with the family, to have Moroccan mint tea, to see their homes and what life is like. And they gain a really unique insight that way. We have not finalized any details for the homestays yet. It's still a piece that's in the works, but it is definitely a possibility and it's something that's been very meaningful for students in the past.
So, safety protocols. So all students are required to be vaccinated before travel and to have records. So they have to have a COVID vaccination. The COVID vaccination rate actually in Morocco is higher than it is in the U S. As of July, it was about seventy five percent. We do have a plan in place in the event that a student or a chaperone becomes ill, that the chaperone would stay in the room next door to a student and be with them and oversee them as they are resting. And if that means we have to extend our time, we would do that as well.
Not for everybody.
But not for everybody.
Just for the student and the chaperone.
The chaperone, exactly. Tourism is one of the largest industries in Morocco. It's, the people there are used to welcoming visitors, western visitors. Students will be supervised at all times. And I think really most importantly is we'll be partnering with a professional trip coordinator, Rushi, who has worked with the trip in the past and has lots and lots of experience leading these trips with students and creating meaningful cultural experiences and in, and like really getting students involved, particularly with other, with their peers. And, you know, his experience, his knowledge is, is really invaluable in this particular trip. And he is the person that we've worked with in the past as well.
Before we take any questions you have, I wanted to end by telling you about all of the really cool things that students will get to do in Morocco. So they'll get to visit several mosques and historical sites, some of which are over a thousand years old. They'll attend a local high school. They'll get guided visits to the Medina, it's the old quarters of some of the cities that we're visiting, including the markets and the Moroccan markets are of unparalleled interest. They'll visit the artisan quarters in Fez. They'll get to see silver and leather crafting, cloth and fabric weaving, all kinds of really amazing like artisan craft just happening. They'll tour the Roman ruins of Lubalas. Lubalas is like a giant ruined Roman city and you can kind of just wander around the ruins and look at all the mosaics and pick flowers and take pictures. It's massive, spans miles. They'll attend a seminar at the university in Fez, one of the oldest universities in the country. And they will eat a lot of delicious local cuisines, enjoy Moroccan tea ceremonies, they'll hear traditional music. And they'll travel to some of the highlights, the highlights of the country, including the Atlas Mountains. The coast, they'll see the coast in Rabat. They'll, Chauvin, the blue city, it's up in the Atlas Mountains, is particularly beautiful.
Especially and, uh, many questions?
Can I come?
You can apply for the next year's trip.
Questions from the board, yes, Mr. Malcolm?
Well, first, thank you for your patience and waiting so long. Appreciate it. And also thank you for being very intentional with contradicting stereotypes because I believe that's very important. It's very important to state it and be intentional about it. You mentioned fundraising, so what does that look like?
Well, so some of the fundraisers are well established and we've done them in the past. We have done a leaf raking campaign where our students rake leaves for community members in exchange for donations for the trip. So if any of you have leaves you need to rake, please let us know.
We actually, an audience member earlier passed us a note and said, if you're doing the leave. I like my leaves raked.
And then the students themselves are, we're hoping going to generate ideas for the types of fundraising activities that they would like to have and participate in. So we're hoping that it will be mostly student driven and I certainly have some ideas, but I wanna see what the kids come up with first.
I won't speak for other board members, but when they do start, please feel free to reach out email.
Yes, thank you.
Never gets word for pay, so.
Karen, go to your end.
Oh, yes. You said IPEIs given seventeen hundred?
We apply.
Okay, we apply, yeah. So what's the, um, your, um, what your expected income coming in? Because what percentage will be fundraising, what percentage will be student participation funds? As well as IPEIs, that's a small percentage of the fifty thousand.
The twenty two hundred dollars is the cost that we present to families. Anything that we are able to earn through fundraising will go to lower that cost. So if, you know, however much we end up earning, say we earn ten thousand dollars in fundraising, which is actually an amount that we had earned in the past. That amount would be applied equally to each of the students to reduce the overall cost of the trip, as would any grants that we receive. The scholarship funds as of right now are coming from existing funds in the account. So there had been fundraising that happened in previous years and the trips were canceled because COVID canceled everybody's travel plans. So we have some funds to cover scholarships this year for the students who have applied. So we're not exactly sure how much the fundraising will lower the overall cost of the trip, but it will depend on how successful the fundraising efforts are.
But we have received the requests from families already. And we think that we have those funds to, to already meet the needs of the family's requests. And then hopefully we will, your fundraising also will be a cost for everyone involved.
We don't want finances to be a barrier to students being able to come. And I realize that we actually can't afford to provide scholarships for everybody, but we're going to try as hard as we can to meet all of the financial need for the students to have said that they have financially.
Oh, I, I wanna just thank the social studies department for taking over what Steve Weisberg started all those years ago. And I also wanna comment that in my recollection in past years, when Steve came and did his talk, it was usually at a similar time. Maybe it's just something about the Morocco trip. And are you sure you've bugged you did enough time in Casablanca because it looks a little shorter?
Um, we actually are spending all of that much time in Casablanca. We'll probably get to walk through the Medina, but just in and out of there.
It's a, it's a wonderful experience you're providing for these kids and thank you all.
So just to our new board members, the, having folks present about international travel, this proposition has been about six years in the, in the making. One, to ensure, what, thank you for you for all addressing very clearly, who was participating, who's being excluded? Is it based on finances, is it based on academics? What are the ways in which we are being culturally responsive, if we're bringing people to someone else's, inside someone else's home? Right, do you have enough cultural knowledge to be able to negotiate and not be further offensive? And so when we started asking folks to make the presentation, we just didn't wanna say yes without being able to understand the academics behind it, understand some of the finances behind it, and try to make sure, try to be as inclusive as possible. So I apologize that we had you here at nine forty in the evening, but don't worry about the clock, don't worry. But we do greatly appreciate the thought and care that's going into this trip and having we, those of us, many of us know folks who've been on the trip before and know what an invaluable experience it is, right? It is life changing. So just greatly appreciate it. So just greatly appreciate it.
And afterwards, after the trip, we did come and present and talk about their experience and it's so clear what a growth experience it was for so many people.
I was lucky enough to go on the first Morocco trip and I, I still get messages from the students sometimes.
Uh, if there's no other questions, we'll entertain motions.
I move to approve the international field trip to Morocco, departing to seventeen twenty twenty-three and returning to twenty-five twenty twenty-three. Inshallah. As, as your itinerary notes.
Second.
Moved by Pat, second by Chris, any further discussion? All in favor? That is everybody, passes unanimously, fantastic. And I thank you very much, thank you for your patience as well.
Thank you so much.
Uh, and please do let the board know when the fundraising outbreak in weeks happens, we will find one.
We will, we will.
And, and fundraising, we'll find fundraising.
Thank you.
The last item on the agenda is an athletic merger. We do athletic mergers on a regular basis for new board members, I apologize, I said this before. Any athletic merger we have is under the condition that it does not take a seat or spot away from an Ithaca City School District scholar app. So this is one for, what do I think it was for?
Southern Payuga and it's for one student for modified wrestling.
Right, modified wrestling.
Though that was a little bit difficult to discover in the paperwork.
Yeah.
And they parry the lead.
Yeah, they parry the lead, yeah.
So. Questions about it? Entertain motions.
I motion to accept the merger for one Southern Payuga Central School student athlete wrestler to participate as team of one of the I C S D District Westering Program for this school year.
Second.
Moved by Erin, second by Chris, any further conversation?
Well, question, suppose there are other students that want to participate? Do we have to do a motion every time?
From where?
From the same school or rest?
Oh, if, they would require another merger, another board vote.
Right, okay.
Um, and whether it be, yes, any sport that would come to. Any other questions folks have? All in favor? That is also unanimous for the board members who are here. I will hold on to any other discussion items and any dates of importance. I thank everybody for their patience and we'll call this meeting to a close, we'll see everybody soon.